So that was like you always say. Because they would talk to us. That's because by now at least you have options to really sound like. You know, if you use a, if you're scanning people like. So they're talking about. Driving some things at all. I don't understand because of the, the law on which you shouldn't have that. Certainly, they go to price this for these two. That could be it.
Uh, that is.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. I would like to welcome everyone to the South Central Texas Regional Water Planning Group, also known as Region L's Public Hearing for the 2026 Initially Prepared Plan. Thank you for your interest and participation. I would like to thank the members of Region L for their commitment to completing this plan and efforts to provide water to our region. Region L is holding this hearing in compliance with the guidance provided by the Texas Water Development Board, both in person and virtually. The entire meeting will be recorded and the recording will be available on the Region L website after the public hearing. The presentation is also available on the Region L website. The website address to view all information regarding Region L is regionlTexas.org. I trust that all attendees are here in good spirit, but I'd like to ask that we please maintain the form throughout the hearing as you would at any Region L meeting. For in-person attendees, please be sure to sign in on the sign-in sheet way set the entrance of the hearing room. If you would like to provide a verbal or written comment here in person, please fill out a comment card that is located at the entrance next to the sign-in sheet and provide it to me once it is completed before we begin taking comments. All verbal comments and written comments provided today will be recorded and will be responded to in the final Region L plan, water plan. For online participants wanting to provide verbal or written comments, please use the link provided in the chat to fill out the virtual form that will be tracked throughout the hearing. The public testimony and sign-in sheet will be available to you throughout the meeting. Again, all public comments will be recorded, transcribed, and documented in the final 2026 Regional Water Plan. The Regional Water Planning Group will respond to each comment and writing in the final 2026 Regional Water Plan. For the layout of how the hearing will go, there will be two segments to the meeting with a short break between each. The first segment is to introduce the virtual hearing process and provide a presentation of the IPP. After a short break, the second segment of the meeting will be the public hearing segment. Everyone who signed up to provide verbal testimony will be asked to provide their comment for the record. In-person attendees who signed up to speak will be called first, then we will get to the online attendees. For online attendees, everyone will be muted as they enter the meeting. If you opted to provide public comment through the comments. Then you may unmute your microphone when your name is called. If you have a question or need help, contact the meeting organizers via the chat button for online participants and in-person attendees can approach us. The presentation is available online at the Regional website if you would like to follow along that way. The initially prepared plan is also available on the website. You can scan the QR code on the screen to access our website or visit regionlTexas.org. We also have printed copies of the presentation located at the back of the hearing room next to the sign-in sheet and some sprinkled up here in the front. Thank you again for your participation and with that, I will go ahead and introduce Lauren Gonzalez of Blackened Beach.
Thank you, Kai. Good evening and welcome. Thanks for being here. My name is Lauren Gonzalez. I work with Blackened Beach and we are the technical consulting team that is assisting the Region L, South Central Texas Region L, Regional Water Planning Group develop the actual 2026 Regional Water Plan. The purpose of today's public hearing is to present the Initially Prepared Plan, or the IPP, to the public. The following presentation provides major highlights of the plan and as Kai mentioned, members of the public will have the opportunity to provide verbal comment as public testimony and comments are open until July 20th. So today's presentation will cover four major topics, including a regional water planning overview and a description of the South Central Texas Region L Regional Water Planning Group, and then highlights of the 2026 Region L IPP, and then instructions on how to submit comments on the IPP. So moving on to our first topic, it is an overview of regional water planning in Texas. Regional water planning in Texas began in 1997. The process is administered by the Texas Water Development Board and funded by them as well. Texas Water Development Board, or TWDB, sometimes known as the Board. And it consists of the development of a 50-year water supply plan for each of 16 regions in the state. Prior to 1997, the Board also prepared state water plans and they were based on more of the top-down approach. However, due to drought, population growth, and limits of existing water supplies, it was determined that the bottom-up approach may be more beneficial. And by bottom-up, we mean by starting with information at the local level, such as planning studies and input from stakeholders to inform the development of the regional water plans. The first regional water plan was submitted in 2001 and it has been updated every five years and we are currently in the sixth cycle of regional water planning. So these are the 16 regions in the state designated as letters A through P. This presentation relates to the South Central Texas region, or Region L, which is shown in yellow on this map. So again, there are 16 regions and then each of the 16 regions develops their own regional water planning plans. These regional water plans are then compiled by the Texas Water Development Board and they create the state water plan that is also in every five-year planning cycle. Each planning area's boundaries are delineated by the Texas Water Development Board with consideration for a variety of factors, including boundaries of watersheds, aquifers, the existing regional water planning areas, political subdivisions, and from color comments. Because regional water planning cycles repeat every five years, these boundaries are also reevaluated by the Board periodically. So regional water planning groups consist of volunteers with various levels of experience in the water industry and a variety of backgrounds and they represent certain interest groups. In creating the plan, planning groups have a local political subdivision that acts as the administrative agent and they are assisted by a team of technical consultants. Each region has their own website where you can find contact information, information about community meetings, and information on members who serve on the planning group. So the regional water planning is guided by the Texas Administrative Code, which states that the regional water plan shall provide for the orderly development, management, and conservation of water resources and preparation for in response to drought conditions. The Texas Administrative Code also states that the plan should study and consider population and demand growth, drought of record water supply projections, and the impacts of water management strategies. And when I say drought of record, the definition of the drought of record is the period of time when historical records indicate that natural hydrologic conditions wouldn't provide the least amount of water supply. So we are generally required to plan for a future with low water supplies during periods of drought and high water demands. So moving on to the next topic, which is the description of the regional water plan, planning area of Region L. So the South Central Texas region, or Region L, consists of 20 whole counties and one half county, which is Hayes County. It's bounded by Region J to the west, by Region K to the north, Region P to the east, and Regions M and N to the south. The planning group for Region L has 32 voting members. The members represent a variety of interests, including the public, counties, municipalities, the environment, agriculture, and others. There are also several non-voting members who represent certain state agencies or are liaisonists from neighboring regions. The sixth cycle of planning is funded and administered by the Texas Water Development Board and the San Antonio River Authority is the administrative agent. This slide also shows the members of the planning group who have been involved in the development of the 2026 Region L Regional Water Plan from 2021 to present. And again, all of these members are volunteers and we thank them for their dedication to developing this important plan. And in fact, we have the chair here today, Herb Campbell. Thank you for being here. So in addition to the regional water planning goals in the Texas Administrative Code, the South Central Texas Regional Water Planning Group went a step further by initiating the plan enhancement process. In this process, established 12 or 11 guiding principles that guide the planning group's decisions. The names of each of these guiding principles are shown here and the full text of the guiding principles are available on the Region L website at www regenlTexas.org and are also available in the IPP in Chapter 5, Appendix 5A. So public participation is an integral part and foundational component of regional water planning. As part of that effort, Region L holds several different types of meetings and the public is invited to participate in public hearings for the Initially Prepared Plan and for other important milestones. The planning group also has quarterly meetings and also workgroup meetings. So workgroups are subcommittees that have been established by the planning group to tackle issues of particular importance and significance to Region L, to encourage stakeholder coordination and collaboration, or to evaluate topics of significance to the region. For this cycle of planning, there were six workgroups shown here on the right in this figure and they included the Population Water Demand Workgroup, the Rural Community Outreach Workgroup, and the Policy Recommendations Workgroup. And all meetings are held in accordance with the Texas of the Meetings Act and the Public Information Act. Meetings are open to the public. Comments are accepted at the beginning and end of meetings and all meeting notices, agendas, and meeting materials and meeting minutes are included on the Region L website and the presentations are provided prior to and/or active meetings. Since 2021, for this sixth cycle of planning, we have had 59 public meetings for regional water planning group meetings and the various subcommittees and this public hearing is the 60th meeting date. So Region L will have several meetings before finalizing the plan and the next meeting will be a virtual information session on the IPP and it will be held on July 2nd. This will be an opportunity to hear this presentation and to ask questions of the technical consultant team and of the administrative agents. No public comments will be accepted at that meeting, but comments may be submitted in writing via email and mail and we'll provide more instructions on that in a later slide. The Regional Water Planning Group will then also meet for their third quarter meeting on August 28th and this is the meeting in which the planning group will consider all comments provided by the public, by the Texas Water Development Board, and any agencies, and then develop proposed responses to each. And then the fourth quarter planning group meeting will be held on October 2nd and this is the meeting in which the planning group will consider and adopt the final plan before it is submitted to the Texas Water Development Board. And so diving into more of the technical details of the highlights of the 2026 Region L Initially Prepared Plan. So this is a flow chart that follows the regional water planning process. The circles to the right of each of these boxes indicates which chapter these tasks are included in. And so as I mentioned previously, public participation is a foundational component of regional water planning. And so that is shown in the box at the very far left because it lasts for the duration of the regional water planning cycle and this information is summarized in Chapter 10 of the IPP. Each new cycle begins with a description of the regional water planning area in Chapter 1 and development of population and water demand projections in Chapter 2. And then Chapter 3 includes an estimate of water availability and existing water supplies. So then we take the existing water supplies and compare it to the demands to determine whether or not there's a shortage or a need. And then these water needs are described in Chapter 4. So in order to address those water needs, Chapter 5 summarizes water management strategies. So our management strategies are essentially projects created to address the water needs or just to document that there are planned water supply or infrastructure projects planned. The strategies are evaluated for feasibility and for consideration of potential impacts and then some are selected for recommendation by the planning group based on those evaluations. And then Chapter 6 then considers the cumulative effects of all of the strategies in the plan in year 2080 on natural resources and the environment. So the plan is developed and approved by the Regional Water Planning Group before it's published as the Initially Prepared Plan and then we'll have a public hearing today and an extended public comment period that ends July 20th. And then all of those comments are compiled and incorporated into the final plan at which point it is published and adopted by the planning group and submitted to the Board by the October 20th deadline. So moving on to Chapter 1. Chapter 1 provides an overview and a description of Region L, including the planet, water resources, natural resources, agricultural resources, the economy, current water use in major demand centers, and a summary of water loss causes. So this region includes major cities along the Interstate Highway 34 or I-35 corridor like San Antonio, New Braunfels, and San Marcos. Population within Region L is primarily distributed along the I-35 corridor with more than 80% of the total population of Region L located within four counties of Bayer, Kamal, Guadalupe, and just at half of Hayes County. The planning area also includes nine, parts of nine, of river and coastal basins. The primary river basins are the San Antonio, Guadalupe, and Moises River Basins. And all major reservoirs within Region L are located in the Guadalupe and San Antonio river basins shown in green and beige respectively. And major reservoirs include the Mizuna Lake System, Canyon Reservoir, Precoing Lakes for power generation facilities, including Calvaris, Lake, Bronning Lake, and Cleveland Creek Reservoir. From an aquifer groundwater perspective, there are five major aquifers located within the planning area, including the Edwards Aquifer, shown in pink, also known as the Edwards Buffalo Small Zone, or EBSZ Aquifer, the Crease and Wilcox in dark blue, Trinity in green, the Gulf Coast in orange, and the Edwards Trinity Plateau Aquifers in purple. And then minor aquifers within Region L include the Sparda, Green City, Ellenberger, Stansaba, Hickory, and Mammoth Jackson Aquifers. There are also aquifers that are included in the plan that aren't shown here. They include the Austin Chalk, the San Francisco River, the Lubian, and the Liam and Grahl Aquifers. So that wraps up the description of the planning region in Chapter 1. Moving on to Chapter 2, that's where we look at population and water demand projections over a 50-year planning cycle and we consider it from the standpoint of water user groups, which are basically water providers or entities on basis of counties, river basins, and major water providers. And then for the water demands, we consider all of those as well except we also estimate it based on the use sector, including irrigation, livestock, manufacturing, mining, municipal, and seasonal uses. This figure summarizes the population projections for the entire region by decade, which is shown on the horizontal or S-axis. The vertical or Y-axis shows the population and the population projections in this plan were developed based on data from the 2020 U.S. Census and growth projections were developed by the Texas State Office of the State Demographer. Population in the planning area is projected to increase by 93% from 2030 to 2080 over the planning horizon, with the majority of the growth anticipated to occur along the I-35 corridor. So counties with the largest anticipated population growth over the planning horizon include Bayer, Kamal, Guadalupe, and Hayes Counties. So from a water demand perspective, this shows the water demands for the entire region by decade along the horizontal or X-axis and the vertical or Y-axis shows the volume of water demand which is measured in acre-feet per year. And so one acre-foot equals 325,851 gallons per year. And the colorful bars indicate each use category and so that includes the irrigation, livestock, manufacturing, mining, municipal, and seasonal uses. Water demand projections are developed through a combination of Texas Water Development Board historical use data and also from stakeholder inputs. Total water demands in the region are expected to increase by 37% over the planning horizon and the municipal sector is expected to increase significantly over the planning horizon from about half a million acre-feet per year to 960,000 acre-feet per year. 500, right, yeah. 530,000 acre-feet per year to 960,000 acre-feet per year, whereas the other use sectors are expected to remain relatively constant. So Chapter 3 summarizes the water sources in Region L and provides estimates of drought year water availability and existing water supplies. And water availability is developed using surface water availability models and groundwater availability models or model available groundwater from Texas Water Development Board. Existing water supplies are developed based on stakeholder input and a variety of other data sources and water resources within the region include surface water, which includes running river, reservoirs, and local surface water supplies, and groundwater and reuse, which is treated effluent from wastewater treatment facilities. So in terms of water availabilities, this figure summarizes the water availabilities for the entire region over the planning horizon and it is measured in acre-feet per year, shown along the Y-axis and the colorful bars indicate each use of the water resource, showing running river, reservoirs, local surface water, groundwater, and reuse. As you can see, groundwater makes up the vast majority of the water availabilities in the region. So as I mentioned earlier, Chapter 4 is where we compare the water demands and the water supplies to determine whether or not they are needs. And so we basically use this general calculation as supplies minus demands equals a surplus. It's a positive number. Or if it's a negative number, that means it's a need or a shortage. And if it's negative, then that means that we need to make sure that we're able to identify water management strategies to meet those needs. So this figure shows the identified water needs as a portion of total supplies. So we have the water volume on the Y-axis and decade on the X and supplies are the solid blue bars and the demands are the black line along the top. And so the identified water needs are the hollow bars, which shows the delta between demands and supplies. So in all decades, municipal irrigation needs comprise most of the identified water needs in Region L. So between 2030 and 2080, areas along the I-35 corridor will experience the greatest growth in municipal needs, including Kendall County, Hayes County, Caldwell, Kamal, and Guadalupe Counties. In 2030, the identified water needs totaled 185,000 acre-feet per year, increasing to 513,000 acre-feet per year in 2080. So this is almost a three-fold increase in water needs over the planning horizon and this underscores the need to develop water management strategies to address those needs. And that takes us to Chapter 5, which is a summary of water management strategies. So we basically identify them, evaluate them, and recommend them. The planning group recommends them. And so examples of water management strategies might include conservation, drilling a new well to expand a groundwater supply, developing a new aquifer storage and recovery facility, or developing new reservoirs. So this is the next step in the planning process, again, where we look at the needs from Chapter 4 and then identify and evaluate strategies to meet those needs. Entities can also add projects even if they don't have needs and that makes it so that they could potentially be eligible for certain types of funding from the Texas Water Development Board. So Chapter 5 is separated into three subchapters and anecdotally, Chapter 5 makes up more than 50% of the IPP. And so it includes the potentially feasible water management strategies. That's basically identifying the strategies, the water management strategy evaluations, and then a summary of water conservation information and any water conservation-related recommendations. The focus of subsequent slides will mainly be on water management strategy evaluations. So the water management strategies that were evaluated include these 32 strategies. So Strategies 1 through 13 are considered umbrella strategies and that might include numerous projects under each one. So there are several entities that have brackish groundwater projects and that's all under Number 6, Brackish Groundwater Development. For Strategies 14 through 30, those are larger water management strategies for major water providers or for generally large projects that are of particular significance to the region. The majority of these strategies are carried forward from the previous plan. However, we do have some new strategies this cycle and they include Number 2, Non-Veterable Water Conservation, Number 10 and 11, Fresh Management, Rainwater Harvesting, and Geniary Water Secure, Medina County Regional Aquifer Storage and Recovery, or ASR, the Size Regional Wilcox Project, and Weather Modification. So the Geniary Water Secure Project and the Size Regional Wilcox Project are shown as new for this cycle. However, some of the project elements were included in the previous plans and have been updated to reflect the sponsor's currently visioned plans. So water management strategies were evaluated uniformly under drought of record conditions and consistent with the Texas Water Development Board requirements and consistent with Region L guiding principles. Each strategy was evaluated using quantifiable reported methods for the factors shown on the right in that figure and the environmental factors on the far right and size of the orange block include several subsets such as impacts to agricultural resources, threatened endangered species, aquatic resources, vegetation, agricultural resources. And then from cost standpoint, they were evaluated in terms of unit costs and capital costs. And then from the net quantity perspective, we look at it from the standpoint of water loss and firm yields. And again, that's firm yields during drought of record conditions. And so this is a summary of the yields of water management strategies of all of the strategies by decade. And so on the X or the Y-axis, we have the volume in acre-feet per year and then again, on the X-axis, we have it by decade and the total volume of these strategies is shown above each of the bars. And so the sum of strategies in 2030 is about 280,000 acre-feet per year and then this volume nearly doubles by 2040 and then it continues to increase for the remainder of the planning horizon where it will reach 888,000 acre-feet per year. And so the next slide is a breakdown of the percentages of that 888,000 acre-feet per year. The majority of the volume is attributed to demand management and demand management is showing rain at 32% and demand management includes water conservation and drought management measures. And then new surface water strategies shown in orange comprise 15% of the yield and then development of fresh and brackish groundwater represents combined 18% of the strategy yields in 2080. So the remainder of the plan is Chapters 6 through 10 and they focus on the cumulative impacts of these strategies on natural resources, drought information, policy recommendations, implementation comparison to the previous regional water plan, and adoption of the plan and public participation. So more information about these chapters is included in the executive summary of the IPP and within the IPP itself, which is. and uh, within the IPP itself, which is available online at region, www dot regionlTexas dot org. So what are the next steps? We'll have an informational session on the IPP on July second. It is a virtual informational session. Um, this will provide attendees an opportunity to ask questions and get real time answers to those questions. It will also provide information on providing public comments, although public comments will not be received at that meeting like they are today. Um, however, you can always submit a written or, uh, a written comment via mail, email, and I'll describe those steps in subsequent slides. The next milestone is that the public comment period closes on July twentieth at five P M. Um, the following milestone is the third quarter, third quarter of regional water planning group meeting, which will be held on August twenty eighth. And this is the meeting in which the planning group will consider and address all the comments received during this comment period from the public, from state agencies, um, federal agencies too, and the Texas Water Development Board. And at the October second regional water planning group meeting, this is the fourth quarter meeting, this is when the regional water planning group will adopt the final plan. And the uh, planning group will submit the final plan to the Texas Water Development Board by the deadline of October twentieth. So again, public written comments are accepted until five P M on July twentieth. So how will you submit your public comments on the IPP? Um, you can submit them via mail to Kai Castillo with San Antonio River Authority at one hundred East Thunder Street, San Antonio, Texas seventy-two zero four, or via email at tukaicastillo at C C A S T I L L O at S A River Authority dot org. And so the final regional water plan will be submitted to the Texas Water Development Board by October twentieth, twenty twenty-five for adoption and integration into the twenty twenty-seven state water plan that the Texas Water Development Board will develop. Um, now I will turn it over to Kai Castillo with San Antonio River Authority.
Thank you so much, Lauren. So at this time, there's going to be a five minute break before the public hearing starts. Once more, for in-person attendees, if you would like to provide a verbal or written comment here in person, please fill out a comment card that is located at the entrance next to the signing sheet and provide it to me once it is completed before we begin taking comments. For online participants wanting to provide verbal or written comments, please use the link provided in the chat to fill out the virtual form. Online attendees who choose to provide verbal comments will be called and be asked to unmute yourself when we get to you. All verbal or written comments provided today will be recorded and will be responded to in the final regional water plan. So at this time, we're going to start a five minute timer on the screen and return shortly. Okay, well, at this time, we haven't received any in-person attendees that want to provide verbal comments or written comments, nor have we received any indication that people online want to provide comments. So at this time, last call for anybody in person that wants to provide a comment. In person that wants to write a comment? Great. Any, I see that we do have a participant online that has their hand raised. At this time, I will ask Ted Borjak, please unmute yourself and provide your comment that is why your hand is raised. Mr. Borjak, would you like to provide a comment here at this moment? Mr. Borjak, we see that your hand is raised online. Can you please unmute yourself? Okay, for the purposes of the meeting, we won't close the public hearing at this point just to make sure that online participants who want to, who want to provide a comment can. But just want to remind everybody that comments have, that we receive today or moving forward post the July twentieth deadline will be recorded and be responded to. Um, comments can be sent to me, kaicastillo at my email address, ccastillo at S A River Authority dot org, or in a physical coffee at the address one hundred East Thunder Street, San Antonio, Texas seventy-two oh four. Written comments must be received again by to close the business July twentieth, twenty twenty-five. To be included in the plan, all comments will be addressed in the final version of the region L, twenty twenty-six regional water plan as part of the documentation of the public hearings. And I want to thank everybody here in person and online for your participation. And as a reminder, we will have a virtual informational session about the IPP that will be held on July second at six P M. Please visit our website for more information at regionlTexas dot org. And as another reminder, the next regional, regional water planning group meetings will be held on August twenty eighth and October second. Again, thank you all for your participation and our information is on the screen. We are adjourned at this time, but we will stay back uh, for online participants that may want to provide comments. But we're adjourned. Thank you so much for coming. So that it doesn't hurt.